Today is May 22nd, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the District 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you in the audience here and those watching online. Director Anderson, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Saxi.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will start off this evening's meeting with our student activity and athletics recognition. At this time, I would like to invite Bill Heim, Associate Principal and Activities Director from Burnsville High School, to join us in celebrating some of our students' accomplishments from this year. Welcome, Mr. Heim.
Thank you, Board Chair Werbe, Superintendent Battle, and members of the school board. This is exciting. We have standing room only here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the wonderful accomplishments of our students in District 191. Each of the people we'll be honoring tonight were recognized at the state level. I'm amazed by the talent, dedication, and character our students show as they participate in activities and athletics throughout the year. They represent themselves, their peers, and our community in such a positive light, and I'm proud of all their accomplishments. One thing to note is that this will be celebrating our winter and spring activities. Here we go. First is the State History Day competition. Are there members or advisors from our State History Day competition from Eagle Ridge Middle? Okay, well, several students at Eagle Ridge Middle School participated in the Regional National History Day competition held at Central Middle School in Eden Prairie. One project, the Grimkey Sisters by seventh graders Bersaba Bersi Chakizo, Harmony Mays, and Kamya Mikkel, advanced to the state competition. The students chose to do an exhibit which included a process paper and an annotated bibliography. "I was so impressed with how invested Bersi, Harmony, and Kamya were in this project," said Eagle Ridge teacher Jackie Parkinson. "They chose a topic that was original and not very well-known and were dedicated to telling the story. I personally learned a lot from their research and love seeing them showcase their knowledge." Jackie also mentioned that the trio received comments from the judges on their score sheets, which included incredible topic choice, thank you for bringing these sisters into light, you are very knowledgeable on the sisters and the historical context of the time, your sources are impressive and exhibit itself, it's beautiful, great job, lovely project, great job tying the project to the theme and covering multiple perspectives. All the criteria are scored as exemplary, proficient, developing, novice, or evident. The students received exemplary or proficient in every category. Well done Bersi, Harmony, Next is our middle school honor choirs. Do we have somebody over there from before? Okay. From our history competition?
Hmm.
Okay.
Yay!
Would you like to come up for a quick photo op? Yes?
It's Bersaba.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, you are here.
There they are. I'll use longer wait time next time. So next is our middle school honor choirs. Could they or their advisor come up, please? Okay, here we go. Twelve middle school students in District 191 have been selected to the American Coral Directors Association of Minnesota State Honor Choir. This is the highest honor a middle school choir student can achieve in the state of Minnesota. Students earning a spot in the fourth through sixth grade honor choir are Nicollet Middle School's sixth graders Sienna Connel, Cyan Davis, Brynlee Erickson, Madeline Herzog, Adina Israel, Janaya Legg, and Lilia Rodriguez. Eagle Ridge Middle School, seventh grader Bailey Pharoah was selected for the seventh and eighth grade trouble clef honor choir. Fellow Ermes Student Beckham Jensen, eighth grade, made the seventh and eighth grade bass, or sorry, bass clef honor choir, along with Nicollet Middle School students Marcus Dick and James Param and Daniel Duran. "I think the opportunities like this are amazing because they really help students learn and grow," said choir teacher Nick McGraw. "Making it to the honor choir is just a special bonus. I'm really proud of these students for pushing themselves, and I'm really excited the way they were rewarded with this honor. Congratulations to all of these students who are excelling in the arts." Next is chess. Let's go with the Nicollet Knights and also the high school chess. Could please come up here?
Hmm.
I knew there were a lot of them.
Everyone's standing. I got some of them. The only one from the high school.
Twenty-one students represented Nicollet Middle School at the National Middle School Super Nationals, held in Orlando, Florida, May 9th through the 11th. There were nearly 4,700 players competing at this event. In the blitz portion of the competition, Nicollet finished second place and Grayson Matthews medaled. In the U-600 portion, Nicollet finished second in the nation, just a half point behind the frontrunner. The team consists of Jonas Lane, Jose Avila, Jack Christman, and Wayland Slinkard. In the U-700 portion of the competition, Nicollet placed third. They were led by medalist Clayton Jensted, 11th, John Hampton, 18th. Others participating in that portion were Elijah Rosas, Mike Krasikutski, and Blake Bennett. In the U-900 portion of the competition, Nicollet placed sixth. They were led by medalist Alex Rosso, who was undefeated and finished 11th place. Others in that section were Dylan Torgarud, Miles Malundo, and Hamza Khadir. In the 1100 under, 1100 portion of the competition, Nicollet was crowned national champion. They were led by Charlie Dahl, who placed first in the country. Other medalists were Franklin Brusino, Avery, 13th, Torin Gerke, 19th. Others participating in that section were Kiran Martin and Gabe Torgarud. In the under-12 portion of the competition, John Wen placed seventh nationally. Mr. Brian Ribnik said these kids were absolutely amazing on how they represented District 191. The chess team includes the following students: Grayson Matthews, John Wen, Charles Dahl, Torin Gerke, Franklin Brusino, Austin Avery, Kiran Martin, Gabe Torgarud, Alex Rosso, Dylan Torgarud, Miles Malundo, Hamza Khadir, Clayton Jensted, Elijah Rosas, Mike Krasenalski, Blake Bennett, John Hampton, Jonas Lane, Jose Avila, Jack Christman, Wayland Slinkard, and the under-18. Okay, let's give a little shout out for our middle school. We'll take a break. At the tutelage of Mr. Ribnik and his crew, I am not surprised. Good job. At the high school, in the U-1800 high school division, the Burnsville High School chess team finished in third place. The team coached by Dane Zagar includes Isabella Burnett, Sammy Porta, Harrison Stage, Emery Gerke, and Coach Dane Zagar. Lastly, we want to recognize head coach Brian Ribnik, who was named Best Chess Educator in the Nation by Chess in the Schools. He will be flown to New York City in late May to receive a $10,000 reward. So congratulations to Mr. Ribnik. Amazing. Chess dynasty, I call it. Under-1800 blitz, thank you. Fast pace.
Ah.
She's quick.
Next, if we could have our Quiz Bowl up here represented. I believe the advisor is here with his photos.
Burnsville High School junior Sam Morgan competed at the High School Quiz Bowl Individual Player National Championship, held in the Chicago area on April 6th. He finished in a four-way tie for 153rd in the invitational field of 260 players from 32 states, the District of Columbia, and Guatemala. "It's been such a joy watching Samuel develop over the past year," said Quiz Bowl coach Andy Gerke. "It's clear he devotes countless hours to reading study packets, reviewing past games, and listening to Quiz Bowl podcasts. Sam earned fourth place in the individuals at the Minnesota High School State Championship at Burnsville High School on March 8th. Congratulations, Sam, on your successes this year."
Next, the Twin Cities Regional Science Fair. Our advisor, Mr. Hugh Miller, and Abby Christman. Fifteen Burnsville High School students were recognized for outstanding work at the Twin Cities Regional Science Fair in early March, winning special awards or qualifying for state and regional competitions. The following students qualified and presented at the State Science and Engineering Fair this spring: Ahmed Ali, whiting power of toothpaste and the chemical effects of our day-to-day brush; Lorena Cortez Vasquez, soundproofing; Everett Dick, the backboard of a basketball hoop and the chances of making three pointers.
I like that.
Ian Lang, the effect of string material type on a tennis ball bounce; and Peyton Mederos, what type of nut has the least amount of calories? In addition, the following student qualified as alternates for the state competition: Favin Tesfe and Olivia Hammond, the radish experiment. Favin, come on.
Come on, Favin.
The following students won awards at the TCR SF Project Competition: Najma Hamood, Lilly W. Science and Communications Award, Iman Aliye, U.S. Air Force Award, Ramla Liban, Association of Women Geoscientists Award, Ahmed Ali, Society in the In vitro Biology Award, Emma Cook, and Antran, U.S. Metric Association Award, Ramla Liban, and Antran, Stockholm Junior Water Prize. Abby Christman, who is up here, got the Tri-State Symposium for her research paper, one of only a few from the Twin Cities to be given this opportunity. "We've had a very successful year in the science fair this year," said science fair advisor Mike Hugh Miller. "We had over 70 students participate in writing scientific papers, communicating projects, or both. Several students won awards at the Twin Cities Regional Science Fair in February, and we had five students compete at the State Science Fair. An additional two students competed at the Tri-State Symposium. Our students demonstrated excellent science skills at all levels of competition. Congratulations to all these Burnsville High School Drum Line, please come up front. Congratulations to the Burnsville High School Drum Line. They took first place at the 2025 Minnesota Percussions Association Championships, held at the Mayo Civic Center in Rochester on April 5th. MPA is a drum line and winds competition circuit for groups in Minnesota and surrounding states. The victory marks the program's eighth state title and first since 2015. Burnsville was also voted as the fan favorite for the second consecutive year. This year's championship-winning production, titled "Sentient," took on the audience on an interstellar journey, following a group of astronauts through the vastness of space. The show featured musical arrangements of David Bowie's "Space Odyssey" and "Tears for Fears," "Everybody Wants to Rule the World," as well as the original music written and produced by staff, completely designed and created by Drum Line staff. The production included music, visual elements, props, floor design, and uniform elements. Drum Line Head Director Paul Connell said, "We had a lot of close calls in the last 10 years since our last state title. We've had a couple of these years where we were in second place and a couple of years during the pandemic that interrupted some really good teams. So it was fun to finish on top again. It was also great to be honored with the Fan Favorite Award because we always try to create a show that is enjoyable for the audience. We've had a wonderful support from our friends, family, and alumni, and fans throughout the season. This season, the team finished either first or second at all competitions, including a first-place finish at state prelims hosted at Burnsville High School. The performance included one of the top scores in program history. With nearly 50 performers in grades 7 through 12, this year's team is also the largest in program history." BHS Drum Line includes, here come the names, 12th grade Stephanie Aguirre, Anais Calva Novero, Anthony Cubius, Maya Holliday, Zaria Jimo, Kevin Rodriguez Cervantes, and Rena Zerbo. 11th graders Soliana Bein, Karen Hernandez Rodriguez, Ryan Kennedy, Jacob Laris, Samuel Morgan, Alex Nashen, Olu Aladeju, Michael Oy, Brian Russell, Exisandara, and Deacon Wenning. 10th graders Kiara Angeline, Isa Ben, Carrie Crawford, Will Edgerton, Max Roca, Xavier Soxy, Landon Schmidt, Isaac Wenning, and Ella Zerbo. 9th grade Archer Bodnar, Liliana Bolton, Lucy Brown, Elle Cordes, Dylan De La Fuente, Alan Engdahl, Emery Gerke, Israel Lara, Caleb MacArthur, Ricky Mickelson, Charlie Morgan, Tobias Olson, Isaiah Tilbury, Aiden Tran, and Alex Wenning. 8th graders Joey Connell, Inger Engdahl, Dwayne Faitron, Levi Williams, Maya Zerbo. 7th grade Avery Aguirre and Valerie Aguirre. Staff: Paul Connell, Alex Klassman, Matthew Matt Schmichael, Jordan Wine, Tyrese Levertie, Michelle Reitton, Audra Hockinson, Nate Grenke, Blake Witness, Laura Connell, and Alex Cole. And our last group, but certainly not least, our Olympic Powerlifting and Weightlifting. In early February, Blaze Powerlifters participated in the USA PL MN High School State Powerlifting Championships. The team took third place. All participants competed in the events of squat, bench, and deadlift. Assistant Coach Lucky said, "I believe the success of this team can be attributed to our senior leadership. This year, we had quite a senior-heavy team, most of which have been for the team for multiple years, so they have a combined wealth of knowledge and experience and were able to share with all of our athletes. It was great to see them step into their roles as leaders and helping the new athletes. It's bittersweet to see these athletes move on, and I'm excited to see them apply themselves in the next chapter of their lives. I am confident they will raise the bar wherever they might be." Individual winners included the following students. State champs were Emma Klug, Carlos Noriega, Caleb Buckner, and Kenny Mo. Second place went to Mariana Jimenez, Caroline Thorson, and Olivia Jacobson. Finishing third place were Mason Pedersen and Abigail Erickson. Nathan Bannell and Carrie Crawford also participated. The Olympic-style weightlifting tournament was held in early March. All participants competed in the events of the snatch and the clean and jerk. Lauren Bachmeier and Gerardo JR Camacho finished in second place. Caroline Thorson and Scott Tito Frobie also participated. Coaches: our head coach, Justin
Thank you for sharing all that amazing news with us, Mr. Heim. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'll just, somebody asked you. Congratulations to each and every one of you, and thank you especially to those who made the effort to come out tonight. It was great having you here. It really adds a lot of energy to the presentation when we have the students and their families here. So thank you so much for coming.
Yeah. I also want to thank everyone for coming and for all your dedication to your sports and your activities. Yes, yes. So yes, thank you for coming, and yeah, we appreciate you.
Go Blaze!
Go Blaze!
And nice.
Thank you. Up next on our agenda, we will be receiving a report about the Board of Education Student Representative for the 2025-2026 school year. But before we do that, I would like to take time to recognize and honor our outgoing student representative and their alternates. This year's student representative to the school board has been Miriam Bradai, and the alternates who have helped support this work have been Shazaa Gutierrez and McKinley Shannon. We would like to thank them all for their service to this board, to Burnsville High School, and to District 191 as a whole. The role of student representative to the board is an important one, with each representative bringing their own skills, personality, and interests to the job. Miriam, Shanaz, and McKinley have been instrumental in helping keep our entire board informed and connected to the happenings at Burnsville High School through their regular reports. More importantly, they have brought helpful insight into the overall atmosphere and outlook of the student body, to be sure we have a full perspective as we consider the issues that come before us. Next fall, I understand Miriam is headed to University of Minnesota at their Twin Cities campus, where she is still undecided in a major but is leaning towards something in psychology or medicine. "I think I speak for everyone when I say we feel fortunate to have gotten to know you all, and we're proud of the work you do, as we're so excited to see you continue on your journey." At this time, oops, sorry. I would like to offer you a little token of our appreciation. At this time, I'd like to call Principal Sandoval and Associate Principal Heim to come forward to introduce our new student representative for the 2025-2026 school year.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yep.
Chair Werbe, Directors of the Board, Superintendent Dr. Battle. And so I too am thankful for McKinley, Shanaz, and Miriam, and how they stepped up this year. In fact, they also helped support, they were a part of our committee that was in the process of looking for our new applicants and recipients that I'm going to introduce here shortly. So before we get to that point, we had 11 individuals that put forth application this year, and of those 11, we had eight that we actually interviewed. And so the three of them, students, myself and Mr. Heim, conducted the interviews, and I'd like to introduce our 2025-26 student board representatives at this point. So with that being said, to my right, first with the alternates. Far right, we have Parvina Yusapova, yes, and she's going to be one of our alternates. Our second alternate was not able to make it, Jennifer Sedu, and so she was unfortunately not able to make it, but you will see her at some point. And then we have Favin. Favin Tesfe, and she is going to be our student board representative. And so I'd like to congratulate the three of those for the upcoming school year.
Thank you for the update, and I want to extend a special welcome to our new representative, student school board rep Favin Tesfe, alternate Parvina Yusapova, and alternate Jennifer Sedu. Do board members have any questions or comments? Miriam?
I've been so, so lucky to get to know you two a little bit over these past couple weeks, and I'm excited to see what you do and bring to this board.
Director Alt?
Thank you. Yes, welcome to you both. Looking forward to working with you and hearing from you in the same way that we heard from Miriam and McKinley and Shanaz. I'm not sure that I remember seeing you. Maybe I missed the board meeting, but thank you to the three of you. This is, in my memory, the first time that we've had such an active backup student board rep, and just really appreciated, you know, all the time, and knowing that you guys were there with the students and helping to... knowing that you guys were there with the students and helping to pool their opinions and bring them back here to the board. It's just, it's really fabulous when you dive in the way that you did. So, looking forward to much of the same with, from you both.
Director Hume?
I have similar comments. Welcome to you both. I will look forward to, and to your colleague who's not here, I'll look forward to getting to know you and working with you in the coming year. I really noticed over the last few years, I'll say, an increase in what we're getting from our student board rep, both in terms of content, contributions. Like, I feel like there's been a lot of growth in this position over the last few years, and so I really appreciate you and your predecessors from the last few years. It's really been good to see, I know that's a position that I think a lot of boards kind of struggle with, getting a meaningful impact, and I feel like we've come a long way in the last few years of really having that, that student voice coming to the board table. So, I really appreciate you and all you've done, and I look forward to your successors next year.
Yeah, I agree with what they've said, and yeah, I just really want to say welcome, and we enjoy hearing your upcoming reports for next school year. Thank you. Up next on our agenda, we will be hearing a report about changes to the Burnsville High School Athletic and Activities Fees from Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent Kevin Kleiner, Athletics Director, and Bill Heim, Associate Principal and Activities Director. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Chair Werb, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Good evening. Here with A.D. Kleiner and Activities Director Heim to share a little bit about their proposed budget adjustments. This is, if the board recalls, this was a request from our fiscal year '26 budget adjustments to look at athletic and activities fees. Through the process, they also identified some opportunities through that, through that they'll describe tonight. So, one other thing I learned through the process in working with Mr. Kleiner, Mr. Heim, is to be, we really do make sure to meet each student and family where they are through that registration process. So, with that, hand the mic over to Kevin.
Thanks, Dr. Belmont. Board Chair Werb, Superintendent Dr. Battle, and members of the board, thank you for having us. I'm sure you have questions, and we'll have time for those, but just overview, it's been a while, I honestly don't even know the last time this was done, just historically, and my time here hasn't, but I don't, it goes back always. So, it's time to at least look at it, and we were asked to, and that's what we presented here. Just, does it cover all of our costs? Absolutely not. Everyone here knows that we, the district subsidizes a large portion of athletic and activity operations, but this is keeping up with pace a little bit of our neighboring districts. It's certainly not on the high end, or the highest end by any means, but I think it's a fair kind of a step. You know, when you don't do it for a long time, then it might feel like a big jump, and maybe we get into a rhythm of every two years, we look at a small, small increase to kind of keep up with inflation and costs going up. Certainly, officials, transportation, like supplies, uniforms, everything has gone up, just like everything in our personal lives has gone up in a lot of ways, so this is just a reflection of that. We still will have our educational benefits adjustments for families that qualify for those. And then, a new piece of this that we haven't had is a family cap of $950, and that will incorporate everything. High school athletics, middle school athletics, high school activities, middle school activities, all compiled together to, for a family to qualify for that cap. So, that's a new thing. We're excited to offer families that have many kids doing many things, so.
Nope, I just think we just really tried to like, you know, categorize, keep things just understandable from like, you know, just a first look off of it, and I think that we did a nice job of collaborating with that, and I think our kids are going to be geared for the future and, and just to continue the wonderful opportunities that you all allow our kids. Our kids are really lucky at Burnsville High School and 191.
And thank you, Mr. Heim. The only thing I would add is that we heard positive feedback about this proposal too from our clerical staff that helps our families navigate the registration process and make sense of everything. So, we're hopeful that that will lead to unpredictable efficiencies too, so. Back to you, Chair.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
Must leave my mic for comments.
Okay.
First, thank you for the family limit. I do think that's a really good suggestion and good to see that moving forward, even if I will no longer have kids in high school next year. I also appreciate you bringing up maybe looking at a more regular review of the fees. Some of these fees, it's a $50 or $60 increase over this year's fees, and I worry a little bit about sticker shock for families, so I think if it's something we can look at doing more regularly in the future, you know, maybe a $10 increase in a year or 15 is less sticker shock than $50 or $60 increase from one year to the next. So, that'd be something I would encourage you to consider in the future, definitely. But looks good. I mean, other than that, I have no other, I have no questions, just those two comments.
Director Alt?
Thank you, Chair Werb. Yes, I concur with Director Hume. The family cap is a very caring and kind consideration, and especially understanding that it's across the board for athletics and activities. A child, you know, the family reaches that cap regardless of whether the student is in athletics or activities, and they're finished, right? Yeah, I appreciate that. Question. To date, are educational benefits for families equating to no cost for those who qualify?
We do, so, partial educational benefits, 50% reduction, and then the full educational benefit, we still have a $25 fee. Just to, it helps a little bit with, you know, things like getting the uniforms collected at the end of the season. There's a little bit on the line there, I guess you could say, but if there was recommendation to remove it, to make it all the way down to zero, that would certainly, and we do, to Dr. Battle's earlier point, either they don't qualify and there's a need, like we will meet that family where they're at, including making it all the way down to zero if it's warranted, so.
So, the fee encourages engagement and, you know, kind of skin in the game as far as participation?
That's the proper way to say that, yes.
Not to do a pun, but I didn't.
Like an investment, you know, a little, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that was it. I think, you know, I had questions up front, you answered them, appreciated the answers that you provided, and yeah, I think this looks good.
I just had one question. So, how did you decide which ones you were going to increase prices to?
Kind of like where they fell in the categories, maybe?
Yeah.
By and large, kind of like the ones on the $200 level for athletics, you're looking at sports without officials, shorter seasons. To the other end, higher equipment costs, longer seasons, facility costs, those kind of things. Those were the, like, and also looking at other districts and kind of following a little bit of their lead, but those would be kind of some of the high marks, like the season, different costs associated with the sport, like do they have refs or not, kind of a sport. That, those were big drivers, and then equipment needs for the sports. Those are some of the high marks.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. All right, that's, oh. Yes, go ahead, Dr. Bell.
Thank you, Chair Werb, members of the board. Couple of points I'd like to make, piggybacking on your last comment. I did ask my regional superintendent colleagues about their costs and comparison. I know my staff did it, but to respond to your question, for example, one district for football and hockey, they charge $355 with a charge $200 for the other sports. So, the cost of equipment, so that's a common practice, to look at length of season, coaches, cost of the season. I also wanted to make the point and commend these three staff members for the work they did to re-envision our athletics and activities. Part of the reason to increase is that we are increasing our numbers based on the efforts of a design team and some recommendations that they made to me. For example, I think for soccer, did we have 100?
Over 100 boys soccer players, yes. At high school, yep.
At high school. So, with increased costs, increased participation, you have to have more coaches, so the salary and benefits too. So, really appreciate the work they've done and thanking the board for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is now time to hear a report about college career readiness and graduation rates from Amina Oftedal, Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, Jesus Sandoval, Principal, Burnsville High School, and Kelly Ron, Principal, Burnsville Alternative High School and Virtual Academy High School. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Board Chair Werb, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to share a report on the update of the comprehensive achievement and career readiness goals focused on those indicators around students who are completing their journey with us. Tonight, we will provide you with information around two of the indicators on the district's strategic roadmap, graduation rates, and the enrollment and completion in rigorous coursework. First, a brief reminder that the comprehensive achievement and career readiness goals are that all students are ready to, are all students graduate and all students are ready for career and college. If we look at the trend in the four-year graduation rates from the past three years, we see a variable change in the percentage of students graduating on time with their cohort. Burnsville High School and the district overall experienced a 2% decline from the previous year, and increases in the four-year graduation rate for students attending Burnsville Alternative High School from 55% with the class of 2023 to 58% for the class of 2024. There is also a significant drop in the percentage of students graduating in the four-year cohort from the Virtual Academy from '23 to '24. However, seeing beyond the single number of four-year graduation rate, it can be helpful to examine the details of graduation outcomes for the group of students who did not meet the milestone of graduating with their cohort. Here we see that an additional 25 students that did not graduate in the spring that did graduate before the start of the next school year, so over the summer doing some additional work. Forty students were enrolled to continue their pursuit of a diploma at one of our school sites, BHS, BOSS, or Virtual Academy. Twelve students were continuing through enrollment and programming through BEST as a transition, as part of their transition program. However, half of the students who did not graduate with their four-year cohort did fall into the category of dropout. Since we know that many students continue on at one of our sites, this graph shares that ongoing graduation rates for cohorts for the five and six-year rates. After five years, the district rate moves to 80% and 84% after six years, and you can see similar trends for increases at Burnsville High School with a graduation rate of 91% and Virtual Academy of 88%. There is also great value for us as a district to examine the graduation attainment for student groups by race and ethnicity. This is looking through it with our equity lens, and we see here that Asian students, Black and African-American students, and students identifying as two or more races showed gains after declines in the previous year. Latino students in the district, which is one of our growing demographics, continue to lag behind their peers in graduation attainment. Each of our high schools, each of our high school sites serves students with different needs and provide unique environments and supports for those students, and each site has their own approach. Tonight, the principals from our three high schools, Mr. Jesus Sandoval from BHS and Kelly Ron from BOSS and Virtual Academy are here with their staff and students to provide you with a view of the work at their sites around graduation attainment.
Thank you, Amina. With that being said, I'd like to introduce two individuals to my right. We have Lori Mayment, and she is our senior counselor, and Miony Chase, which is a senior. And Miony Chase is going to speak a little bit about her perspective as a senior, and then we'll have Ms. Mayment follow.
I'm a senior at Burnsville High School. I came to Burnsville towards the end of my sophomore year. Edwenuity and credit recovery have given me the strength and mobility to get the credits that I needed to graduate and where I needed to be. Many students who have needed credit recovery just like me have progressed in edwenuity in a short amount of time, learning lots of new things with each credit. Without credit recovery, we would not be able to succeed in competing high school and would be stressed along the years not being able to make up the credits as fast, or we would have to go to summer school. I look forward to working on my credit every day. Sorry. I look forward to working on my credit every day to get better in knowing that I have the support of my teachers whenever I don't know how to answer a question on edwenuity. I know I can ask for help because I know they have what's best in mind for me and other students as well. It's because of opportunities like credit recovery and summer school that I will be able to graduate on time in June.
Thank you, Miony. At this time, I would like Ms. Mayment to say some few words with her role as a counselor overseeing our seniors.
So, being the senior counselor is a new role to me. I started it in October. I was, I don't know if you know anything about me, I was at Metcalf as a guidance counselor and a social studies teacher for a long time, then at BOSS for a period of five years, and then last year I was the, one of the two 10th grade counselors at the high school, and this year the sole senior counselor at the high school since October. And definitely, it's given me a new perspective on the needs of students at the high school and the things that they need and their families need to get to graduation. As a counseling cohort at the high school, we are always talking about how to get students to the endpoint of graduation from high school so that they can move on and achieve, whether it's going out into the world of work, going into the military, or going into some type of tech school or college. Things that as a group, we try to focus on are really the ninth grade. Academy has given the counselors a lot of time to get in those classrooms, especially in Success 191, and connect with students. We work really hard to make sure all of the students that need access to programs such as credit recovery and summer school are registered for them for as early as they can be, and that they understand what they're doing and why they're enrolled in those programs. We work through individual meetings. That's been a big thing that I've focused on this year with our seniors, especially those students who maybe need some extra support and help getting to, to their diploma, making sure that they're having individual meetings with me and that we're checking and talking about how this matters and going over grades, working to teach them to be self-advocates, which is really important and a lifelong skill that they will need. We've also, as a counseling department, along with our success teams, started things like intervention days for our younger students in ninth through 11th grade, where several times throughout the semester, we pull in those at-risk students to C-180 at the high school and get teachers to come down, and we are there really trying to get through assignments, make up tests, redo tests, if that's an option, and those have really been successful days. As I said, we are all members of our success team where we are working on identifying Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three students and interventions for them. We also work to meet the social and emotional needs of students. Some things we, obviously, we work hand-in-hand with Washburn, making sure students are referred to that, to our NOW program. We have a very active grief group at the high school, and then things, other things we do, we send out letters about credit recovery, where students are at, what they need to do.
students are at, what they need to do. As a senior counselor, this year I sent out through Parent Square, which is a whole learning curve for me also, to understand Parent Square, as soon, shortly after I took over, letting students know, these are the credits, and parents know, sending to parents, these are the credits that your students need to complete in credit recovery before the end of the year to be on track for graduation. Then at the start of second semester, we sent out kind of handwritten letters with the same information, this is where they're at now, because students are constantly finishing classes in credit recovery. And then just this past two weeks, I've gone through all of the grades for all of the seniors on Schoology and set up individual meetings with each of the students and emailed each of them saying, you're at risk, like you have a D or lower, in a class that you need for graduation. Sent individual meetings with the students, sent them an email, and then sent another Parent Square email to all of the seniors who are at risk of needing something or possibly needing to go to summer school. And then I presented summer school as a requirement to them, not really an option. So.
Thank you. In addition to many of the items that Ms. Mayment has mentioned, being my second year here in this position, I acknowledge that one of the things that is very obvious with having one senior counselor with 491 students at high school, and certainly Ms. Mayment is rocking it, but to be able to reflect not only on data, to be able to say, is this the best model for us? And so through data dives, through conversations, through reflecting and planning, we are going to change the model for the upcoming school year. We are keeping, as it's important to keep for our ninth grade academy, two counselors, but we are moving to a 10 through 12 alpha split, so that way the, the work can be split up amongst four counselors and not just the one. And so that's one of the things that we're making a change to for the upcoming school year. In addition to a couple of things that, that I would like to share and mention, we have really done a lot of work with our tier-one curriculum and alignment. A lot of the professional development that we've done this year has really asked individuals, departments to dig deep and ensure that what is being taught in one biology class is also being taught with, with the same content, with the same rigor as the second biology class. And so we're going to continue that work for the upcoming school year because that's an important piece. Couple other things, attendance, as we are aware that attendance really also plays factor within, as you see graduation rates as an example. And so we actually have a, an attendance team onsite that we started, and we have members for our district-wide attendance team. I know that when I met with county workers, county members with Dakota specifically last summer, they had mentioned to me that it's been years since anyone from administration has met with them as county workers. And so right from the beginning of this school year, we've collaborated with them, and they provided some additional interventions and support. And so that will eventually catch up, and I'm excited in the direction that we're going around, the focus of attendance, not only as a school, but as a collective district because, because every day matters and it's important. And then lastly, some of the things that we're trying to really continue to bridge and find ways to, to bridge is our family engagement. And so ensure that our family members truly know from the beginning in ninth grade, here's what needs to happen when it comes to graduation, how many credits, what is a credit, what is the systems that are in play all the way through the senior year. And so not waiting until that last few weeks, the last month, surprise, it's more of a drip approach. And so we're excited about what we've started this year and how that is trickling in.
Can I say one more thing? We also meet with all new student families individually, which I don't know that all schools, I don't know, I've not been in that situation, but I feel like that's an at-risk group of students when they're moving in. Meet with them individually, make sure their families understand where they're at, and also understand our graduation requirements if they differ from their school they're coming from.
Sure.
Sorry.
And now I'd like to invite Kelly Ron and her counselor, Robin, to share for Virtual Academy and BOSS.
Good evening. While Lori was speaking, there were several things I thought, oh, I could have put that down too. One of the things, so I'm putting on my Virtual Academy principal hat because they're two very different programs. BOSS is, you know, an alternative learning program that's on quarters with credit acceleration, whereas Virtual Academy is on semesters that matches what the high school, what BHS is doing, so they're, they're very different programs. But looking at the Virtual Academy graduation rate, when we're looking at percentages, the sample size is much smaller. So we have 35 students that are in that 63% column. So 13 students didn't graduate in that column, and seven of them were continuing. Five of them did drop out and one was unknown. But of those 13 students that did not graduate in 2024, zero of them were there more than a year in Virtual Academy. Six of them were one year in Virtual Academy. Two of them were six months or less in Virtual Academy, and four of them were less than three months in Virtual Academy. And I say that because it's good to look at that data to say, how do we work on those transition plans as the seniors come as seniors into Virtual Academy to work on that four-year graduation rate? And I'll get to some of the things that we've done for ninth through 12th graders that will have an impact for students that stay in Virtual Academy, and then some of the ideas we have for that, and Robin, our counselor, will share some of that as well. I asked some students, I usually do some sort of exit survey for BOSS and VA students to see what worked for them, what suggestions they have, and that's where some of the best planning comes from, hearing their voices. So the students I talked to, or, sorry. These are some of the comments that they said. The first one, what helped you graduate on time? So these are all students that are going to graduate in a couple of weeks. The student said family, counselors, doing volunteer work, so that some of that pairing that goes with BHS, the volunteer credit, we don't have that separate for VA, but we're working with BHS. And you'll hear a theme of that as I present information about BOSS and Virtual Academy, the connections and the partnerships we have with Burnsville High School. Also, the counselor you'll hear constantly mentioned throughout, and this person said counselors. We have one counselor for Virtual Academy, Robin, and she's been a fantastic addition this year to our program and really made the difference for a lot of our seniors this year. This student said doing things at their own pace. There's weekly work given in Virtual Academy, so students can work when it works best for them. We have a lot of students with full-time jobs, they're doing their work in the evenings. We have a lot of, some students who are training for different sports, and so that weekly work has really worked for students. Again, this person, counselor and teacher is checking on me. We do have advisors for Virtual Academy, we have a resource room for students to attend, so having that personal connection in a, Virtual Academy at the high school is asynchronous, which means there's no live class sessions. I know my team came and presented in my absence about a month ago, and so I know that they shared some of that information. And then teachers met with me when I need extra help. Because it's asynchronous at the high school, teachers have, they can schedule kids in whenever it works best for the kid and the student, and that really does, or the student and the teacher, that really makes a big difference. How did VA staff help you stay on track to graduate? My counselor helped me stay on track by updating me with everything I need to know and answering my questions. Again, she'll share a little bit more of that. She was constantly checking in with seniors all year long, had a senior spreadsheet, different colors, very organized. Supportive messages on assignment, assignments and emails kept me motivated. We really focused, Virtual Academy, on doing some student recognition, honor roll, student of the month, those kinds of things that we added this year for Virtual Academy. Lots of reminders, leniency on deadlines. We accept late work for Virtual Academy, but also help students make a plan when they get far behind. How are we going to get this work in so that it's not so overwhelming when you pull up Schoology and see, missing, 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 missing? What plan can we make? And teachers kind of accommodating different student needs. And then teachers always contacted me about my classes and answered my questions. We have a collaborative team for Virtual Academy High School that would take students and talk, like say, I'll talk to this student, I'll talk to this student, to make sure that we have that continued communication with students about what they need. Barriers or challenges for students to stay on track for graduation? A lot of students choose, not a lot, but there are a number of students who choose Virtual Academy for mental health, so that was a barrier for some students prior to being in Virtual Academy, and then they were able to be successful in that environment. Staying motivated, sticking to a schedule, for some students, that, that's a big learning curve when you go into Virtual Academy, and it's all asynchronous. You have to, no, there's no bell to say, now work on your English, now work on your math, so setting that schedule up. My time span, I get uninterested and off-topic fast, so students work when it's best for them. Like I mentioned, we see a lot of Schoology logins in the middle of the night, 3:00 AM, 2:00 AM. That's when students are doing some of the work. And then running late to school and missing something important in Virtual Academy, it's all there for you, so you aren't going to miss something. Suggestions students had, a couple of them had said nothing, their experience was great, they had happiness and free time. Some students do daily check-ins with an individual, whoever their go-to person is, they meet every single day just to say hi or check in. The weekly drops of assignments they liked, and they, most of them gave very positive feedback for that question. So some of the, some of the things that we do in Virtual Academy, I mentioned some of them while going through those quotes. We're really working on a referral and transition process, and when I get to BOSS in a little bit, that's standard work for us at BOSS now, the transition process. And now in Virtual Academy, we have a full-time counselor and we have a social worker, we have an interventionist, we have things we didn't have before that we can make that a more robust transition process for those students that are only going to spend a year, six months, two years, that aren't going to be with us their whole high school career, so trying to make that transition a little bit better for students. One of the things that's been very helpful is my partnership with Jesus this year. We meet monthly and talk about things that all three high schools are working on, or how we can better work together on things, and that has been very invaluable this year as well. You'll see that there was lots of things that are highlighted or emboldened that were new this year, that we added just beginning this year. We have daily advisory for ninth through 12th grade students. It is asynchronous advisory, it's not a live session, but there's things that teachers are doing to coordinate with parents and students daily for ninth through 12th graders. We have individual advisory plans where students are finding, talking through, how many credits do you have? Even starting, obviously, at the beginning of ninth grade, you don't have credits yet, but showing, here's the classes you're going to need throughout, and they have an advisor dedicated to them for ninth through 12th grade, and that was something new that we added this year, the advisory plans. Data collection was something that I've been doing at BOSS for many years, that I implemented in Virtual Academy this year, where we do four learners' charts at the mid-quarter of each quarter to see which students are in the red, the yellow, the green, and the blue, so we can have targeted intervention with our interventionist and counselor and our student support team to target students that need different tier one and tier two and tier three interventions. I have reflection meetings with each individual staff member after each grading period to go through all of their student grades, and what did we try for this student, what do you know about this student, so that when I'm, I can share that with our student support teams, and the team can talk about that. I've been doing that at BOSS for years. I just started implementing this whole data collection system, which has about five different components, this year in Virtual Academy as well. And then in Virtual Academy, we also did unit recovery at the end of the semester. So students that were between 45 and 59%, what units did they need to finish? So we gave a two-week window and had an organization sheet with our interventionist counselor, myself, to, to get them just over that hump, so they weren't having to redo the whole class because they ended at 58.2% or whatever the case. So that really did help a lot of students make it over that, and teachers were able to say, this is the unit they're missing. And again, that's new in Virtual Academy this year, and I've been doing it at BOSS for maybe four or five years, and it does make a significant difference. An interventionist was new this year, Jill Peeper, our high school Virtual Academy interventionist. We also added one to middle school intervention, but we're here for high school today. But she is, she meets with students all day long, individual Google meets, helping them with assignments throughout the day and, and has, teaches them how to advocate to their teachers, ask them for this. That's been a fantastic addition as well this year. Our student support team isn't new, but we meet weekly, but we added teacher voice to the meetings this year, so we spend about an hour and a half once a week talking about individual students and they're trying to get them on track to graduate. I mentioned this several times now, but I creatively staffed having a Virtual Academy full-time counselor, and I believe it made all the difference to have full-time, but Robin is amazing. And so that has made a huge difference in Virtual Academy this year, to have a full-time, dedicated counselor to our sixth through 12th grade Virtual Academy students, for families and for students. And recognizing student success, I kind of mentioned, we did more things this year. We enhanced it in 2425. Robin's going to talk about some of the individual things that she's done as the counselor. And then, like I mentioned, we meet in collaborative teams for the high school Virtual Academy teachers all together once a week and discuss student and student progress. And then we also do have credit recovery in Virtual Academy as well. And then one of the things, it's not a bullet point on here, that we're thinking about is, and Robin will talk about, students come into virtually, Virtual Academy credit deficient. And so how, is there a way to create some of the types of ALC things that we're doing at BOSS in Virtual Academy, which would look different, but those are some of the things that we're thinking about? So, so this is Robin Dineko, and she's going to kind of share a little bit about her first year as Virtual Academy counselor and what she's done.
I think it would just be helpful to understand, like, who our clientele is. We have 82 seniors this year. Of the 82 seniors, 46 seniors transferred in at some point in the school year. Of those 46 students, 33 came credit deficient, severely credit deficient. And some of the backgrounds, like, that makes Virtual Academy different than the other high schools, it, this is what they give as a reason for coming over to the Virtual Academy. They're working full-time, they're watching their siblings, there are mental or physical health concerns, safety at the high school, and flexibility. So for this year of our 82 senior, 82 seniors, 13% will be returning this fall. Four of those students were originally VA students. So four out of the 82 will, of our, of, of the seniors will be returning this fall. In terms of graduation planning, each student receives a plan of how to attain their diploma. We believe in communication, 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 can't over-communicate, both to the student and to the family, just so that they always understand. So it could be through advisory, that we're emailing families, they get those updates once a week, but also like towards the end right now where it's crunch time, you know, it's also meeting with families outside of regular hours, because again, a lot of our seniors are working full-time. We have one senior in particular, has two full-time jobs, and we're trying to get him to the finish line because he has an apprenticeship site, like, already ready to go to be an electrician. And so we, we are here, no matter what their pathway is going to be, to make sure that they get there. Personalized supports that we have for our students, Principal Ron already alluded to them, but we have teacher office hours daily, we have a resource room open daily from 12 to 1:00, staffed with a teacher that students can pop in if they just have a simple question, or they can take a longer period of time. And then we have the interventionist, who also meets individually with students if they don't understand the content, context. And then lastly, just our student support team, we meet weekly, and there's five of us that take different points on, is this an attendance concern? Is this a content concern? Is this, they just need a person in their corner? So we just have a really great team. And I know it's numbers-wise, not, not as many, but I do believe that it's going to continue to grow and grow because of the flexibility that it provides families. So, that's it for me.
Okay, now I'm going to put my BOSS hat on. And so for BOSS, we've really, since, I think this is my sixth year at BOSS, and we've really been focusing on four-year graduation rate, because we know that some of our kids are going to take longer because one of the criteria of coming to BOSS is being most, nearly all students are behind in credits when they come. However- However, we've had this shift into focusing on four-year graduation rate, and I think we've seen some results from that focus in that time. In asking some of the students their voice, one of the big things that I hear from BOSS students, I'm going to be your helper, it's okay, I'll be your assistant. Having teachers come up to them, you know, we talk a lot about, about it at BOSS to check in with students, not ask, how, do you need any help, because the answer might always be, I got this. So really focusing on that, that help to students, and then this student did call that out. A lot of motivation came from family and staff here at BOSS. For those of you that may come to BOSS graduation, you'll see just how tight the staff and students are at BOSS, as well as the families. Students at BOSS have to do a continuous learning plan throughout their time. When they start at BOSS, they see all the credits they have, they're highlighted in different colors, how many do I need, when will I graduate, if I do this many this time, go to credit recovery? And then they set goals in, in post-secondary, personal goals and academic goals each quarter, and the teacher meets with them during advisory to go over those each, each quarter, and they stay with that same teacher throughout their time at BOSS. So up to four years, if a student didn't graduate on time and start, we were, we started in 10th grade. So they, this student acknowledged knowing how many credits, it's, some students come in not knowing, how many credits do I have, how many do I need? Going to school every day and getting my edgenuity or credit recovery done with support that helped this student from BOSS graduate on time, and one of the focuses for us is creating connection. Student attendance improves, academics improve, everything with that relationship that we build. How did BOSS staff help you graduate? Supportive, flexible. This person said, they made me feel like a person, always made me smile at least once in each class. I was really happy with that feedback. Motivated me to keep going, checking in with me daily, every teacher caring, always helped out any way they could. They made sure that if I wanted to pass, they would help it, make it happen and push me. They pushed me and reminded me what I needed to do to graduate. And again, we have daily advisory at BOSS for 45 minutes with that teacher. Barriers or challenges? This person's challenge is at their other high school was just big assignments, and we really try to break things down for students into manageable tasks, because a lot of our students at BOSS are also working quite a bit, maybe their parents, or they're helping out at home, so trying to break that down into manageable chunks. Attendance, I couldn't push myself to show up to something that I dread so much for seven hours a day. We still have a full school day, but we have block classes, and for some students, that really works. They only have four classes, plus their advisory throughout the day, so that's less transition, less different classes to do homework for, and we keep most of the work in the classroom, so it's classwork versus homework. Suggestions for students to stay on track, get more comfortable with students, push them, to let them know how important it is, keep staff around that create bonds with students, and then make sure they're focused and off their phones. So our strategies and actions at BOSS, some of them are repetitive, like I mentioned, but the four-year graduation rate started several years ago, where I, myself, my counselor, not Robin, but I have a, a BOSS counselor, Molly Romano, who is instrumental in BOSS graduation as well. We meet with the counselors at BHS, so Lori here, and then all the other counselors, four times per year, and talk through each and every student that's being referred to BOSS, so that we have a background understanding of what interventions they've tried at Burnsville High School, what worked, what other things we should know, what other services they're receiving. So we have personal meetings with each counselor separately at each quarter break before students come to BOSS. I mentioned the continuous learning plans already, the daily strive. Students work, can work on credit recovery during that advisory time as well, so that's where the BOSS students are doing the bulk of their credit recovery. The data collection process that I mentioned, that's standard work at BOSS, we've been doing that for several years now. We have a new position at BOSS, an interventionist, who has a math background that's been very beneficial this year, and we will again next year. So that person meets individually with students, or small groups, or goes into classrooms and helps small groups within the room, depending on the student needs, and a lot of the data of who he's working with comes from the things that I mentioned when I was discussing the four learners' charts earlier. Student support team at BOSS, we also meet weekly, and we added teacher's voice to those meetings as well this year, so each week we're talking about those students that maybe aren't on track for graduation. We have pathways, classes that students are involved in at Burnsville High School, and we, each year have more and more students accessing those, as well as students who might need an EL class at Burnsville High School, or a special education class, so that we're, we're using our resources together as one district to try to make the best individual student for, or individual schedule for each student. The work program is something that helps students graduate, because they can take a work experience class, and then they can get up to four credits for their job. They have to do some reflection with our work experience coordinator, but that really does help a lot of students be able to get graduated in four years, because a lot of students are already working. Our counselor does grade-level meetings for juniors and seniors to focus on the skills they need for the next steps. We have a lot of students at BOSS that go on to post-secondary, and she works with their planning for that, and students going out into the workforce, trying to help them do some planning through Zello, which I think is mentioned perhaps later. She does individual meetings with every 12th grader to let them know at the beginning of the year. We also send the letters that Lori had mentioned for high school. And then for collaborative teamwork at BOSS, we focus a lot, focus a lot on SEL, socially-emotional learning for our students. How do we make the environment so welcoming and develop those personal relationships to get the attendance to improve? A lot of students come to BOSS because of attendance, from either their traditional high school, or wherever they're coming from, they're just not attending, so we really focus on building relationships. And I think that's the conclusion of my two schools.
And, and thank you to the folks from BHS, Virtual Academy, and BOSS for sharing just really some of the really intensive things that they're doing to focus on, that In addition to graduation rates, the comprehensive achievement and career readiness goals also focus on education, our education on preparing students for rigorous demands of post-secondary study and work. One school board dashboard indicator around, is around the enrollment and completion of rigorous coursework, and for the purposes of this data and the charts that you'll be seeing, a rigorous course is defined as a course that is eligible to earn college credit. Here we see the three-year enrollment, enrollment trends of some gains in, and you can see the gains in enrollment in grades 10 and 11, and some declines in grades 9 and 12. The achievement and integration plan goal is around rigorous coursework and focuses on the equity and access with the goal of reducing the under-representation of Black, Indigenous, and other students of color. While the enrollment of at least one rigorous course for white students remained the same, there was a decline in enrollment for students of color, which then continued our disproportionality. Students may engage in rigorous coursework in multiple ways, advanced placement, concurrent enrollment, which includes college in the schools and our Inverhills programming, and post-secondary enrollment options or PSEO, where students attend school outside of our own campus, at the, at the college and university that they choose. Here you see that students are enrolling in college-credit-eligible courses in advanced placement and concurrent enrollment at similar rates, while post-secondary enrollment options or PSEO is significantly smaller. But enrollment doesn't tell the whole story. The enrollment rate might be similar for AP and concurrent enrollment courses, but the college-credit attainment differs greatly. With 132 credits earned in AP and 918 credits earned through concurrent enrollment, which really reflects about 33, 34% of our students who engage in an AP course are earning credit, where almost 98% of our students who enrolled in concurrent enrollment are earning their college credits. And finally, one other indicator of college readiness is the percentage of students who do enroll in post-secondary education who are required to take developmental courses because they are not fully prepared for the college-level coursework. For Burnsville High School, that is only 9% of our students, and 11% of our students district-wide, who were required to enroll in developmental courses in their post-secondary option enrollments. There are many different indicators for achievement, comprehensive achievement and career readiness, and I appreciate you taking the time to let us share the information around graduation, rigorous coursework, and developmental courses. Thank you.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments? Director Alt. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you all, this is a really great report. I'm going to try to limit myself, because I have lots of questions. So, comment in a statement, in terms of credit recovery, and I, I'm not sure if this is safe to say for both BOSS and BHS, but our goal would clearly be for us to be so successful that we put credit recovery out of business, right? What are we doing to track that success specifically by cohort?
Are you asking like how many credits people are earning, or are you asking like?
How do we, how do we know that where it's possible to get ahead, we are? Understanding that there are going to be students that come into credit recovery for a variety of reasons, the ones that are there, I guess, how, how would you, how would you reassure us that we're getting ahead with credit recovery to a point hopefully where it's, the need for credit recovery is relatively minimal?
Well, I know for my two programs, the discussions that we have, when I meet with teachers, is their course completion rate, and that is growing in, to, to look at data in, in Virtual Academy, you know, it was, when I started in Virtual Academy, we were at 54% of course completion, so then all the people who didn't theoretically would do credit recovery, and semester one of this year is at 74%. So we've, we're tracking that and seeing how it goes up, and some of that is, like I mentioned, the unit recovery, catching those ones, so you don't have to do the full unit recovery. And in BOSS are, we've gone up continuously each year too, because that's the data we're looking at to try to not turn those courses into credit recovery, but to catch them. Sometimes at BOSS, the students are taking it for the second time, however, we're trying not to have it go into credit recovery, exactly what you're kind of saying. So that's the data that we look at at BOSS and VA specifically, how to not have it be credit recovery.
Gotcha.
And to reduce that number.
Yeah, Director Alt, I think you have a great question and a comment. I think the, for us to say that we will always have credit recovery, we really would want us to, at some point, minimize that. I know certainly credit recovery is reactive instead of a proactive approach. And so, as I mentioned earlier, really focusing on that Tier 1 curriculum and alignment really is going to help us, year after year, that foundation to ensure that we're not just simply being that reactive, that proactive, you know, that all teachers within every department, with every, every course alike, has the foundation that they need. So I'm excited about what the future looks like.
And I think also, Kelly, in your report, I could hear and visualize that small school culture that you're building in terms of the academic and social-emotional supports that really give our BOSS students the enrichment and supports that they need to be successful. And that just came through really loud and clear, which I, which I appreciated. Appreciated hearing Principal Sandoval about the 10 through 12 alpha grade change, you know, with the counselors. It'll be interesting to hear in future reports, you know, how that's, how that's working In terms of, so you had mentioned also, in terms of grading, you know, you talked about making sure that every, you know, the, the content is aligned, and regardless of which teacher a student may have, we know that it's going to be very comparable. What have we done to, has there been need for an alignment with attendance? How are we defining, you know, how are we defining an, an absence, and is it consistent across the board?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great question. So yes, it is defined from a state in regards to what, what does it look like for a student that would be, I believe it's 90%, and I, I'm looking.
Excuse me, I was asking Amy if she wanted to come, since she does the attendance pilot too, if she can help. Go ahead.
Sure.
Principal Sandoval.
Yep, and so what I, what I know, and I don't want to miss, misspeak on percentage-wise, but I know from a state, there's a, a clear level that, that allows us to mark when students are, whether they're at risk or not, given that particular level, and we certainly abide by that within, within each school, within the district. But in regards to what we're specifically doing, we are, one of the nice things that we've done as a district is, we've brought in Edgoclimber as a, as a resource. It's a platform that allows us to see many things that we weren't able to see, and so nothing with some of the other platforms that we have, but that has allowed us to be really intentional on some of our Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports, when it comes to the interventions, anything from a, a simple phone call home, to more rigorous, where we have some students that have, are on an attendance plan. I mentioned before the, the need to continue to collaborate with our, with our accounting partners, and so they really have helped and stepped up with, with their, their work and collaboration, and so that's been helpful. So yeah, it starts with us being, obviously, out of the gate for 9th grade and setting the tone, and really 9th grade academy has provided that. At some point, you know, bringing in perhaps some 9th grade teachers that would be able to speak about the academy in itself, and as we look at the data within our 9th grade, specifically students, there, there are successes that are, that are happening because of the intentionality of taking a large idea and really focusing in on intentional support with teachers that are, that you have within a cohort. And so, speaking of the academy, we are, currently have four teams, and we'll move into two teams next year, for the simple fact that based on the feedback, based on some other things that we recognize, we're, we're having another level of, of support. And it's been really amazing to see with our first year of implementation, the model work that we're doing, and how that is going to trickle through the next four years. And so, yeah, certainly if Amy wants to come up and share a little bit more perspective, can offer that, so.
So Director Alt, just to clarify, were you asking about the consistent attendance or the technical piece?
I think the technical piece. If I'm a student and I show up, you know, 30, 25 minutes into a class, do I know that I'll be marked absent?
Yep, it's the technical piece.
Okay.
I appreciate, I appreciate the other information too. That was awesome.
Yeah, sure, sure. So certainly the technical piece, yes, our staff is aware of absences and tardies and what the differences are, and one of the things that we've done, that this is our full, our first year of implementation as well, is brought on a platform, it's called Securily. And so before, there was five, seven different pass systems, paper passes, et cetera, and so this was our first year of implementing fully, and that's been really helpful, because that's provided us with data, and that's also provided students with visual of what green means go, red means you don't have have a pass and you really can't go anywhere, right? And so there's other things that we're doing within that platform that allows us to not only track and monitor, but then put in that next level of what is the plan, what is the action, and see forth, so.
Awesome. And I think, one thought, Amina, that popped into my mind as you were presenting the rigorous courses and, you know, the percentage of students that attend PSEO, would it make sense to take into account in that same calculation just the AA degree itself? Because that's going to compete with PSEO theoretically.
Right. And actually, all of our rigorous courses should be able to compete with the attractiveness of PSEO, and the AA degree students are wrapped into the concurrent enrollment, and so we can really look at the next report, how we might separate those out and see what that might look like.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Director Saxi.
Thank you. First, thanks for the great information and all the great work you're doing to drive each and every student towards graduation. I was just a little curious about the numbers on the AP side. Have we identified any barriers to kids actually going and registering and taking the exam? It's kind of interesting that, you know, a very solid majority of the kids who took the exam earned the credit, but we had more kids not take the exam than got the credit. So is it something to do with not thinking they're going to pass, or the registration and setup process to get set up for the exam, or anything else that's at play there?
Yeah, I think there's multiple variables. One of the things that our administrative team has talked about and reflected on is that, I'm not sure if students are aware, that they, they can choose to take the AP exam even without taking the course, as an example. Students are familiar with that option if they sign up for the AP course, that they don't necessarily need to, it's not required to take the AP exam, but I, but I know that there's other students within our system that their schedule doesn't allow the taking of the AP course, or there might be conflict with a CIS course in Embar Hills, you know, part of Sociable Arts. And so one of the things that we're reflecting on is how do we get that message out that any student can take an AP course? And so, I think there's work that we need to do in terms of the communication and education of our, of our students.
And I think we've also examined whether or not there's financial barriers, registration barriers, all of those particular pieces, and so we've done our best, especially at the high school, staff has really done a nice job of making sure that students know that none of those financial barriers or time barriers will prevent them from engaging with the, with the exam.
Thank you.
Director Anderson, do you have?
I was just on.
Oh. Okay. Thank you for your presentations. That's very informational. So I just, I had a couple of questions. So I found the story very interesting of the information about the students coming into Virtual Academy and how they're already credit deficit. And it just makes me wonder, because if that's affecting that graduation rate, if they're already coming in needing so much assistance, how are we evaluating those students as far as, is the Virtual Academy the right fit for them? I mean, and, I mean, I guess it depends on each student, but if we're still having a struggle with those students, then actually graduating, if, you know, that's the amount of those students that come to us and then they end up not graduating, what are we looking at as far as, is this the right place for them if they're having a struggle? I mean, it may seem like the Virtual Academy is something that, you know, might be right for them, but if they're having a lot of struggle, maybe in-person is better, maybe the alternative high school is better. What, what are we doing as far as, like, trying to, I see, like, you're looking like you want to answer? Do you have an answer?
Well, for students that are coming from outside the district.
Yeah.
That are transferring in, those conversations are happening from the get-go.
Okay.
Because I require them to have a meeting with me before they can even register for classes.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's, that's a conversation that's had just right at the beginning. Is this the best place for you? We've had students that transfer in literally this year, four out of forty-six credits. And so, is this, as seniors, is this the place for you? Would BOSS be a better fit? But it's always that in-person that kind of trips them up, that they would have to come in person for a period of time, and so they choose to stay in the Virtual Academy. And then we, we've talked about developing a better process, like with BHS, to say whether or not this is a great fit because, you know, just that partnership of, you know, sometimes they're sent to us because they are attendance problems of the high school, and so maybe this might solve that problem because maybe they are working full-time as well, and so they're just making it to the high school a couple days a week, and so.
I think when we're looking at individual students, we do meet with the families, and it is a family choice of which program that they're going to choose, but we, now at the end of the year, we'll look at Virtual Academy students who haven't been successful in Virtual Academy and say to the families, maybe in-person at BHS would be a better fit, or maybe BOSS is a better fit, or what supports can we offer you in Virtual Academy next year to have more success? But we do give parents all those options, and sometimes their child, this might be something that their child really wants to try and has convinced this is going to be work for me, and sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't. So we're constantly meeting with families and saying, here's the options for you to choose as a family which program you see best, because it is ultimately their choice. I know for students going from eighth to ninth grade now, as they begin high school next year, Robin and I are going to get information to families, eighth grade is synchronous, so students are in class all day, ninth grade is asynchronous. What skills do you need as an online asynchronous learner to be successful? Creating time schedules, organization, like those kinds of things, or how can we help you develop those? So we definitely, some students come in for two or three months to Virtual Academy and then leave. They come and try it, it doesn't work, they go back to Burnsville High School, or to the middle schools if they're in middle school, or they come to BOSS after a semester is unsuccessful. So we're, because of our numbers, we have about two hundred and fifty students, six twelve in Virtual Academy, we're able to, you know, know each student and what they need, so we are continually having those conversations. Okay. So even if, like, they don't graduate at, like, the time they're supposed to, are we following them? It's just to track them? Yep. Say, okay, are you, are you still on track to at least try to still get your diploma? Yes. Robin mentioned that, what number we're coming back next year, we, there, from our Virtual Academy, that are going to stay in Virtual Academy to graduate? And I think it was slide six of the slideshow that showed our five-year graduation rate in Virtual Academy was very high, I believe it was eighty-eight percent. So there is, some students actually come into Virtual Academy their second senior year because they don't want to go back to either BOSS or BHS, so they're going to finish in Virtual Academy. So that is another group of students who come that do finish, by that data did show that, that fifth year they did do. Okay. So, so how does, I mean, maybe this is a question for you, Amina. So if, if students don't graduate on time, but they still graduate, how does that impact graduation rates?
Sure. So the state tracks four-year graduation rates, so if they don't meet that four-year milestone, they're considered not graduating. And then if you remember on slide four, we talked about the outcome. So some students are continuing, some are eventual graduates. So this last, past summer, the class of twenty-twenty-four, we had twenty-five students who didn't hit that, that milestone, but did graduate then with credit recovery or summer school over the time. And then the ones that are, were continuing, we had probably, I think we had another forty students who were continuing on at one of our other three sites. And so we do track them, and then they show up in the five- and six-year graduation rates.
Okay. All right. I just, you know, I want to ensure that we're still, like, I mean, considering that students don't always graduate on time, but they still graduate, and that's.
Yep. And we track, and we track the four-year, five-year, six-year, and seven-year graduation rates.
Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you. I don't have any other questions, but thank you very much.
Great. Thank you.
Moving on, we will now receive a report about an update to voluntary pre-K from Jason Sellers, Director of Community Services, and Amy Petrowski, Director of Student Support Services. Welcome.
I don't care.
Chair Wurbe, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board, pleased to be here tonight to offer you an update around voluntary pre-K scheduling for the upcoming school year. I'm Jason Sellers, Director of Communication, Community Education, and I'm glad to be here with?
Amy Petrowski, Director of Student Support Services.
All right. There are four learning goals from this presentation. We want to talk to you about some of the adjustments we've made. We want to talk about some of the alignment that ECSE has done to support some of our most at-risk students in early childhood. There's a little bit of history at the end of the PowerPoint, should you want to, to look at that, and there's also some statutory requirements that we put in there, because sometimes they answer the, the questions that you may have. First and foremost, we're adjusting the amount of student contact days next year for VPK students in elementary buildings. This is primarily because we are seeing great results with VPK. We have parent feedback that's difficult to find childcare for just Mondays in a month, right? Some nods up there. We also know that if we're getting pretty darn good results with VPK, as you discovered a couple of weeks ago when Allison and I were here, that more school could equal even better results. The third piece is that it also increases average daily membership, which would mean we would have a result net increase of budget year over year and maximize the amount of ADM that each student could generate. At this point, if you're in an elementary school and you're in VPK, we generate about point four-one. That difference between point four-one and point six is large when it comes to finance. We are moving from a hundred and forty student contact days to a hundred and sixty-two. Of course, VPK Diamond Head has always been full day, and we expanded to three sections last year based upon family need and requests to have more all-day programming. So we try to increase that instructional time. We also want to align as much as possible, given that there's statutory requirements that make VPK different with the K-12 schedule.
All right. So there's a lot of really good opportunities here for early learners who have unique abilities as well. Adjusting the student contact days from four to five days per week ensures that all kindergarten eligible students, regardless of the setting, receiving, are receiving consistent and equitable access to early learning opportunities. By increasing the instructional time, the average daily membership rate increases from point three-eight to point four-nine in special education. He may have a different one in VPK. We have a little bit different things in, in our ECSE, but the adjustment will result in a significant increase to the general education revenue and directly is tied to the number of students that are, that we are currently serving. So a five-day model promotes stronger routines, deeper skill development, and more continuous learning, particularly in literacy, numeracy, and social-emotional development. This expansion supports a stronger transition to kindergarten, reducing the need for early interventions. The proposed schedule change will not increase the contact days or workload for our ECSE teachers and related service providers. Licensed staff will remain current responsibilities while students benefit from the increased instructional time. Our Level Four EAs will increase from four to five days, workdays per week, to ensure adequate support for students across all five days are had. This adjustment aligns with support staff schedules with students' needs without altering any licensed staff contracts. The shift to five-day model is projected to generate an additional eighty-seven thousand dollars in special education revenue reimbursed at sixty-five percent in eligible costs. These funds will help offset the increased cost for support staff while reinforcing the commitment to early intervention and equitable access. Enhancing instructional time increases the average daily membership with, directly generates more special education revenue and general education funding. Students benefit from more consistent and frequent access to essential, to essential support such as speech, occupational therapy, physical therapy, leading to stronger progress towards their IEP goals and objectives. A five-day work week provides greater consistency and appeal to potential staff members seeking a full-time position, supporting stronger hiring and retention practices. Increased staff time allows for more intentional training and coaching opportunities for our educational assistants and, and other team members. More instructional days enable improvement of coordination between our ECSE teachers and related service providers, support staff enhancing the quality of service for each of the students. And a five-day work schedule allows for increased adaptability in aligning services to individual student needs for piloting innovative supports and processes within our structures.
As you can see, our, our partnership with our ECSE staff and Director Petrowski is really important. You know, we have nine ECSE teachers, ten ECSE assistants that in any given day are in classrooms with students all day, both AM, PM, and here at Diamond Head. We also have other building supports in our system, including, of course, principals, social workers, and the infrastructure that exists there. In addition to that, Dr., or soon-to-be Dr. Petrowski, and Director of Curriculum Instruction, Amina Oftedal, led the PK through three partnership in which the board received outcomes that we have aligned our work to. Increasing instructional time and the quality of that instructional time was one of those outcomes. A little bit of history, and I know you've, some of you have seen this before, VPK started in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. When it started, we had four classrooms across four schools. It was a hundred and forty-four students. In this school year, we have three, approximately three hundred and forty students currently enrolled. You can see the breakdown of teacher and program assistants. We have three hundred and ninety total seats, so we have fifty seats that we don't have enrolled yet at this point in time because we don't have those students. History, pre-K, community education has led early childhood programming outside of ECSE in the district, and you can see a little bit of the history of how there's been some name changes and some other pieces. But VPK was really the game changer in two thousand and seventeen. That pre-kindergarten program and those seats awarded by the state along with the associated funding has been a game changer for students and for families, and you remember the data from a couple of weeks ago. There are other statutory requirements. There are actually a lot of new statutory requirements. I'm not going to go into detail on this. The big piece, though, to know is that the legislature decided to apply new eligibility criteria. I mentioned this when we came a couple of weeks ago. The new eligibility criteria essentially indicates that students have to qualify based upon a number of specific identifiable factors, and if they don't, then parents would have to pay a fee. We've developed that fee structure so that it would keep the fees low while still providing the same opportunity for equitable access for all families in our district, whether it's free or whether there is a sliding fee scale. There have been other statutory requirements. Last year, as some of you may remember, our entire VPK instructional team underwent the READ Act training led by Amina Oftedal and Allison Jordan, our Supervisor of Education. Of course, pro-pay with the legislature, early childhood educators are now part of the BEA contract. There have been changes and clarifications in ADM generation, hence budget implications for voluntary pre-kindergarten students. This year, last year, we piloted Haggerty, which is a literacy-based instructional program that is in our K-12, or K-5 system. This year, we are fully implementing that, so we're looking forward to seeing the explicit finance instruction outcomes after we collect that data from this year's students for next year. Last, VPK curriculum is different in many ways than K-5 curriculum, and one of the reasons why it's different is because we are required by statute to incorporate certain elements in the daily instruction, and it has to be play-based. So you'll, often people will go by VPK classrooms and, what are those students? They look like they're playing in there. Well, yes, yes, they are. They are. And it's really targeted instructional, play-based, and when you get used to it and you get into the classroom, you start to see what those things actually manifest as for students. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any board members have questions or comments?
I had to give others a chance.
Okay.
Go first. Thank you both. Couple of questions. So just to clarify, district-wide, VPK for ECSE will be five days regardless of location?
Yes, we're going to be moving to five days a week for some students. So our three- and four-year-olds may not be able to handle a five-day routine, and so we, we don't have a shortage of special education students in our ECSE programs, and so the opportunity that we have by going five days is that we can think outside the box to make sure that students are able to come in and get that instruction. box to make sure that students are able to come in and get that instruction over five days rather than try to squeeze everything in four days. And so we're able to bring in students that might receive speech services at, at their location. We're able to bring them into our buildings and do that during some of those days because of that opportunity for that fifth day. So a lot of our students that are in birth to three, when they turn three, they turn to what, in the special education world, a different kind of IEP. And so when that happens, they don't necessarily receive those in-home services like they have in the past. And so we have to have time for them to come in and continue their services. So that five days a week increases that opportunity for us to really think outside the box and how we're going to best meet their needs and have access to all of their related services in one place.
I must be confused. I thought this was specific to VPK.
Yep. So VPK...
Because the three, the three- and four-year-old program is different from VPK, no?
Yes, no, it is different. But our ECSE still runs on that, is going to continue to run on that five-day program. So all of our kindergarten-eligible students, if they're here in ECSE at Diamond Head, are going to have access to the same number of minutes as any other kindergarten-eligible student, no matter of their abilities. So that is just aligning to what our, our, all of our students, so they all have the same access to time.
So then the three- and four-year-old program, as you said, is different?
It's going to be different.
Yeah.
Yeah. Five days of that, it, it may not be easy for our three- and some of our four-year-olds to have that, so...
Well, that was going to be my next question, because I...
Good.
I hear a lot of benefits that are adult-centric. Understanding also increased access to learning benefits students. Developmentally and emotionally, do we know that moving, moving this to a five-day offering, that the students are ready for that, that we have the necessary supports in place to ensure that, you know, we just went through a round of interviews where candidates were very clear that we needed to make sure that, that we support the special needs of our students and also make sure that all students can access learning?
Correct. So yes, I think that this will much better align and prepare them for kindergarten. So when they're only here like four days a week and with that routine for two and a half hours, and then we put them into five days a week without that really good transition, I do think that this will benefit all of our students to prepare them more appropriately for the transition into kindergarten. And I think that that five day will also increase a lot of their, a lot of their academics that they're going to possibly need in kindergarten and, as well as that socially-emotional. I also believe that with the increase of our VPK in downstairs, it will allow us to do a lot more innovation and inclusion for a lot of our students that right now don't have access to general education, kindergarten-eligible students at this time, because we are at a location that is only special education. So we will also have opportunities for that. So more opportunities for inclusion, more opportunities to get their skills, and to transition into kindergarten.
But the ECSE students are in VPK, no?
Not all of them, no. We have kindergarten-eligible students that are here at Diamond Head Education Center four days a week, same as they are in the general ed, or in the buildings. But yes, we do have several kindergarten-eligible students that are accessing their special education services here only.
Got it. So then with the expansion, you're saying we will, and the additional revenue funding that's generated, we will be able to enhance the supports for those students to actually be in those classrooms?
Well, I mean, yes.
Like you wouldn't, you wouldn't just put, add, add a number of students into a classroom without an adult to go with them who's trained to be, to help students?
Correct. And so we have, we've already been working with all of our educational assistants that are here four days a week, because in special education, they're only here four days a week. So they are willing to come in that fifth day a week, because a lot of them do want to work five days a week. And so they were all excited. A lot of our educational assistants that are working in that four-day-a-week have offered themselves out that fifth day to go and support out in our elementary buildings if we happen to have an educational assistant that is out sick in a way. So we're already, some of them are already supporting wherever they can. And then that Tuesday through Friday, they're here at Diamond Head Education Center.
Gotcha. And then turning to, one last question. In terms of, going back to the statement about the VPK that's in the school sites versus Diamond Head, I remember when my kids were, were at elementary and, you know, VPK had just been added. The kids had the same, the kids in our school sites had the same access to those specialists, the FIED and the media center. What kind of equity do we have for our students here at Diamond Head in terms of that access?
Yeah, I think the program you're referring to, I don't know if that was VPK. I think that might have been Tiny Tots, and that was a mixed-age preschool.
It wasn't Tiny Tots, no. It wasn't Tiny Tots.
I have no information. I even called Tom and Cindy Check. To my knowledge, VPK students in buildings have not had access to specialists, per se. Like, they're not on a specialist schedule, because they're only there for three hours.
Not anymore.
To my knowledge, we haven't had it in the program. To my knowledge, right?
As a volunteer in the schools?
Yep. Yep. The way the program is set up for half-day models in the schools, we, if we were going to add a specialist to the schedule, it would have to add time. And then we wouldn't be able to do AM and PM. And what that would result in is an all-day program everywhere, which would more than triple the cost of the program.
Sure.
So I understand what you're saying.
And the media center as well.
Yeah, no, our...
Beyond the adults.
Yep, our current, yep, our current VPK students do access media centers. I did an observation about a month and a half ago, and the teacher brought, after the observation, my part of the observation was over, they then went to the media center and, and they do those sorts of things. They also get, so the curriculum is different, right? And so the play-based piece plus the recess piece is included in there, so, but they don't get formal specialists, the way that, the way that you're asking, no. At Diamond Head, they don't have formal specialists either. They used to, I think, you know, from what Cindy said, Cindy Check, the former coordinator of early childhood, she indicated that they brought in special, like a special music group, paid additional money to bring them in. There was a special, there was something else, I forget what it was. But it wasn't specialist, per se, at least not here at Diamond Head.
Got it. I guess, my only thought is, wherever we can, we want to be mindful of what we're offering students in our schools that are in half-day programs versus, and, and the resources of, of an elementary site versus what's here at Diamond Head. And, and they are different.
Yeah.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you, both. Lastly, are there any reports from board members regarding board committees, appointments, and school assignments?
Any committee work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Legislative policy.
Sure. Legislative committee did not meet, and so I have nothing to report there. 917 had its meeting on May 6th. And, I mean, they approved policies, but what was really great was meeting the eye-track registered teacher apprentices in the program, and so hearing, based on them, their experiences in working to get their teacher's license while being in the classroom and being advised. And I thought that was really great. They had nothing but wonderful things to say, and, and I think the district's looking forward to that expansion, so. I think there will be license, some are going to get their licensure by next year, I think.
Thanks.
Policy committee met this past Tuesday, and we have a number of policies coming forward with no change. Wanted to highlight that the new policy covering cell phones will also be coming forward. And there was a recommendation from the policy committee to bring that policy forward with the understanding that additional regulations will come forward after that to provide additional detail and clarity. And the next time we meet is June 17th at 5:00 here at Diamond Head.
Thank you. This includes, this concludes the information portion of our meeting. We will now move to the business portion of our meeting. We will start by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Anderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. In the first item under new business, we are being asked to adopt a resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Presenting this resolution will be Athletic Director Kevin Kleiner. Welcome, Director Kleiner.
Thank you, Board Chair Wurbe, Superintendent Battle, and members of the board. Yes, just the annual renewal of our Minnesota State High School League membership. Answer any questions you have. Obviously, being a member of the State High School League is a requirement to be in our conference, to really play just about any school in our state, so not doing it would prevent us from having competition. So hopefully, you are in favor of approving. Thank you for your time.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to join the Minnesota State High School League for the next school year?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? Having been moved and seconded, this resolution will require a roll call vote. So in just a second, I will ask Sarah to call the roll, and when she calls your name, please respond with either an aye, if you are in favor of the resolution, or nay, if you are opposed. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Sacksy?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Director Chair Wurbe?
Aye.
Director Al?
Aye.
Director Hume?
Aye.
This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Next item we are being asked to adopt is the Resolution of ISD 917 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. Once again, presenting this resolution will be David Lake, Director of Operations.
I think you skipped.
Miss one, 191.
191.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Next, we are being asked to adopt the resolution to approve the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program Budget for FY '26 for ISD 191. Presenting this resolution will be David Lake, Director of Operations.
Good evening, Board Chair Wurbe, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Each year, we come to you seeking approval for our Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. This is a 10-year comprehensive outlook. We put many items on the schedule that are approximately $100,000 or more, but we do do well over 50 other smaller projects throughout the year. We do need to get this approved prior to August so that we can submit this information to the state of Minnesota. They will then use this information to develop our tax levy that will come up in September for your final approval in December. The amount we are looking at now is taxable in the upcoming year and is payable in the following fiscal year. This is a 10-year map where we make adjustments based on the given priorities at each given time. The intent is to give the board and our community the flexibility to move things around as needed to best suit the needs of the district. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopts a resolution approving the revised Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program Budget for fiscal year 2027.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plans and Budget for ISD 191?
So moved.
Moved by Director Al?
Second.
Seconded by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? It is, oops. It is time to make the roll call vote. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Hume?
Aye.
Director Al?
Aye.
Chair Wurbe?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sacksy?
Aye.
This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. The next item we are being asked to adopt is the Resolution of ISD 917 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan. Once again, presenting this resolution will be Dave Blake, Director of Operations.
Thank you. The explanation for approval is very much the same for this long-term facility maintenance plan. We're doing this at the same time so that it'll be reflected in our local levy. Intermediate District 917 is a district that serves some of our students with unique and special needs. We are a member of that district, and as a member, we help to cover some of the costs. District 917 is not able to levy directly, so they go back to their members. Our portion of their long-term facility needs comes back to our district, we approve it, and it becomes reflected on our levy. It is my recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the Resolution of ISD 917 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Program Budget.
Is there a motion to adopt the Resolution of the ISD 917 Long-Term Facility Maintenance Plan?
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester? Seconded by Director Sacksy. Having been moved and seconded, this resolution also requires a roll call vote. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Sacksy?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Chair Wurbe?
Aye.
Director Al?
Aye.
Director Hume?
Aye.
This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Up next on our agenda is to approve the employment contract for the new superintendent of schools. On May 7th, the board unanimously voted to offer the superintendent position to Dr. Latonya Daniels, which she accepted. Following her acceptance, negotiations began surrounding her contract. A copy of the contract has been included in the board materials for everyone, for everyone's review. And tonight, I am pleased to be bringing forward a formal recommendation to the board of approval, to approve Dr. Daniels' employment contract for the superintendent of schools for the Burnsville-Egan-Savage School District. Is there a motion to approve the proposed contract for Dr. Daniels?
So... Second.
Moved by Director Al, seconded by Director Hume. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. The motion carries unanimously. The next item we are being asked to approve is the Propay Memorandum of Understanding with Burnsville Education Association. Presenting this recommendation tonight will be Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Good evening, Chair Wurbe, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Each year, we need to go through the process to approve an MOU with the Burnsville Education Association for our QComp program. Locally, it's identified as Propay. This was established in the early 2000s under the Tempolenti governorship and has continued now for almost 20, 20-plus years. The QComp presentation, I believe you'll have at our next board meeting, which they'll kind of go through some more information, how it's been running. They're also required to do that annually. We are making a couple of adjustments to the Propay MOU, updating dates, but primarily reducing the number of observations and the total payout amount. With declining enrollment and the increased amount of teachers that now fall under Propay, specifically are ready to grow, our VPK programs, the cost has gone up. So part of this is for budgetary reasons, to stay within the budget for, for the Propay allocation. So with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the proposed revisions and re-adopt the unchanged language in the 2025-2026 Propay Memorandum of Understanding with the Burnsville Education Association.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume? Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is a cost-sharing agreement with Dakota County for election hardware, software, and related services. Presenting this recommendation will be Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Okay. This recommendation... This recommendation addresses election hardware. It is a shared responsibility with the different municipalities in Dakota County. Dakota County is looking to update that equipment. It's been now a little over a decade since the last time it was updated. The bulk of the expense will be coming from the county, then the townships and the cities, and finally, the smallest amount will actually be distributed amongst the school districts based upon the number of citizens within each boundary. So, that cost has been distributed over five years, and with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve cost-sharing agreement with Dakota County for election hardware, software, and related services.
Is there a motion to approve the cost-sharing agreement with Dakota County for election equipment and services?
So moved.
Oh, moved by Director Anderson?
Second.
Seconded by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. In our next item on the agenda, we are being asked to adopt a resolution ratifying the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2025A. Presenting the resolution this evening will be Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, and Aaron Bushburger from Ellers. Welcome.
Thank you. Before I provide the resolution, I will ask Aaron to just give you a little bit of the details, how the whole process occurred, the very successful bids, and, well, I'm not going to steal your thunder, so Aaron, if you will, go ahead.
Thank you, Stacy. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Battle. As Stacy mentioned, we're very excited to be in front of you tonight. We had a very successful bond sale. In your board materials is what's known as a sale day report, so I'm just going to cover a couple of those items within the sale day report. That, that just provides an overview of how the sale went. So, again, we sold these bonds a week ago. We received 13 bids, which is fantastic. It really shows strong interest in the district in your bonds. Typically, we like to see at least three bids, so to have 13, I think, is just a real good showing on behalf of the district. The low bidder was UBS Financial Services out of New York. Their bid was at 3.21%. And so, to put that into perspective, my colleague Matthew Hammer was here a month ago. He, at that point, we were estimating an interest rate a little bit higher than that. So, a month ago, we were estimating savings of about $1.8 million, and we ended up with savings of almost $3 million, so over $2.9 million. So, again, really strong results. I will mention a couple of other things. So, the district receives what's known as a bond rating, so think of it like a credit score when you're applying for a mortgage or a loan, right? Typically, the higher the bond rating, the lower the interest costs. So, part of that process, you receive the state's credit enhancement rating, so the state guarantees your payment, so you get that state rating. And then you also receive an underlying rating, and so that's currently at a double A3 for Burnsville. So, I will mention that as part of that rating process, we go through about an hour call, hour-long call with the rating agency. Just wanted to give kudos to Stacy and Tyler and their team. They did a fantastic job and really represented the district well, and I think that came through on the rating as well. So, that just kind of gives you a high-level overview. As a reminder, back in March, the board approved what's known as a parameters resolution, meaning that if the savings was over $500,000, then that granted authority to the superintendent, and I think the board clerk signed it a week ago at that point. And so, just to be clear, the resolution tonight is ratifying that agreement that was put in place a week ago.
So, with that, it is my recommendation that the Board of Education approve the resolution ratifying the issuance and sale of general obligation refunding bond, Series 2025A, in the original aggregate principal amount of $33,325,000, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, providing for their payment, providing for the escrow and investment of the proceeds thereof, and providing for the refunding of bonds refunded
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution ratifying the insurance and sale of general obligation refunding bond, Series 2025A?
So moved.
Moved by Director Sacksy?
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion? Director Alt?
Just a clarifying question for the sake of our community. The, the impact of this bond sale is essentially we're allowing to, we're returning money to our taxpayers.
Yeah, and, and I think it's important to note that part of this refunding is we're paying off some of that debt faster, right? And that's why we're seeing that significant interest savings. So, it may not be an impact immediately, but that is definitely in place a little bit further down the road.
Long-term. Thank you.
Having been moved and seconded, this resolution also requires a roll call vote. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Hume?
Aye.
Director Alt?
Aye.
Chair Wurbe?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Sacksy?
Aye.
This resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we really appreciate the continued partnership with the district and with Stacy and Tyler and their team as well. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
For our final agenda item this evening, I am asking the board to approve the SMART goals for the ISD 191 Board of Education for 2025-26 that we prepared and planned out during a work session held on May 8th. Included in the board materials is a redlined draft of the proposed changes, which include the most significant changes to supporting and onboarding the new superintendent and outline special projects for the year, the next year. Is there a motion to approve the Board of Education goals for the upcoming year?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt?
Second.
Seconded by Director Anderson. Is there any discussion?
I have a question, since I missed that meeting.
Oh.
Um, under the, it's the first goal, yeah, goal one, one of the measures of progress is board members will engage with our district's cultural, parent, and family groups. Was there a discussion about what that might look like?
There was some discussion about that.
Yes.
Sure there was.
Yeah. It was, it was engaging in, well, receiving reports, also acknowledging that there are multiple parent groups throughout the district and a variety of ways to connect with them. In addition, specifically, someone mentioned among some of the other groups, the APAC family group-
Sure.
-that, you know, we've been collaborating with.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Do you have other questions?
I think that was the only one.
Oh.
I think everything else looked fine and made sense to me as I was going through it. Just that one just made me go, what does that mean? Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Having no further agenda items, I now call to adjourn this meeting of the Board of Education. Thank you.